Thank you. There you go.
So we're not doing the eyeball thing?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 23rd, 2021 regular scheduled Port Clinton City Council meeting. Would the court please call the roll?
Jay Belo.
Here.
Pat Helvis.
Here.
Roseanne Hickman.
Present.
Jerry Trolley.
Present.
Beth Gilman.
Here.
Margaret Phillips.
Present.
Lisa Sibody.
Here.
Counsel, you previously were emailed the February 9th, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I would move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Thank you, Mr. Trolley. A motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to approve the February 9th, 2021 regular meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same size, sign? Motion carries, thank you. The chair notes that certification has been made regarding compliance with the rules and notifications of this meeting. We have no guest presentation, no public comment. Okay. Executive officers reports. Counsel, we have four new ordinances this evening. Ordinance 421, 4-21, 5-21, 6-21, and 7-21. All have been assigned to finance, all except for 7-21. We'll go to the full three readings if counsel so chooses. On 7-21 administration and Mr. Hatfield have asked that if counsel so chooses that it be passed on its first reading due to a time-sensitive nature, and I will let Mr. Hatfield speak on that during auditor time. So, just a reminder, resolution 21-1. Mr. Administration and Mr. Colston asked that that be passed on its second reading, and it was previously assigned to finance. I'll let Mr. Colston talk about that during his talk. And that is all I have. Mayor Snyder.
Thank you, Madam President. How's everyone doing today? I want to extend a thank you to the street department. Mr. Colston and I had an opportunity last Monday evening, early Tuesday morning, to spend about four and a half hours riding around in various snowplows. You may not have realized, and I learned this as well through the news outlets, that was the fourth-largest single-event snowfall in our area's history, the most snowfall since 1982. Ironically, at 6 o'clock that next day, that Tuesday evening, the folks in Toledo were so excited that 40% of the roads had been hit, where we had everything open and we're starting to attack alleys and push some stuff back. You know, we did drop the ball a little bit on getting to the alleys, and if you'll allow me to explain why. The amount of snow and the wind along Lake Shore Drive, Perry Street, and somewhat on Fulton took so much resources, so many resources, to keep those places free that the alleys were done on an as-needed basis and on-demand. Someone called and said, hey, I've got to get the dialysis. Someone called and said, hey, I'm a nurse, I need to get out. Fire, EMS, alleys, people that have the alleys, police, so forth. So those were done eventually, as things started to settle down on Perry, Lake Shore, and a few other spots, they were able to get to their standard pattern of alleys. So, our apologies for that, but there was a method to all of the madness out there. You may have noticed, I shared an email as I was riding along with the street folks. In that video that was also posted on Facebook, the windshield on the truck I was riding in kept freezing up. Little bit of research, I found out that the five, what we call larger, snowplows that the city has were purchased in '95, '99, 2000, 2002, and 2004. You know, if those vehicles were people, three of them would be of drinking age, and one of them, as a car, is entitled to classic license plates. Of those four, only the one purchased in '99 was purchased new to the city. The rest were purchased from, used from other sources, other townships in our area. It was something. As we were plowing the snow, we would go for about 45, 50 minutes, and then have to go back to the garage for 20 to 30 minutes of defrosting. The vehicles, the windshields would fog up. Our windshield wipers actually just stopped working at one point, and the vehicle Tracy was in just died in the middle of State Street, had to be towed back to the city garage. During the snow emergency, we thought we gave people ample time. The police department did end up ticketing 55 parked cars. Unknown number of cars were towed, not initially because of the snow emergency, but because of other things. They were parked the wrong way on the street. They were in the middle of the street because they just stopped right there. So that's what happened there. Since that point, there have been additional vehicles towed for 48-hour notices, snow-related. I want to thank those individuals around the community that shoveled their sidewalks and driveways. Want to really thank those that took the time to shovel their neighbors, and their neighbors' neighbors', and their neighbors' neighbors' neighbors', and kind of shake my head and do one of these things for those that stopped at their property line. You know, this was a unique situation. You know, the past year or so, we've looked out for each other quite nicely, and I would hope that that would continue. This is just nothing scientific, just my observation driving around. I think we're probably 95-plus compliant in the snow removal from sidewalks. Yes, there is an ordinance out there dealing with that. The difficulty comes with the enforcement. You just hope that people will do what they're supposed to do, living in such close quarters as we are. Enough with the snow. Hopefully, it's gone for the year. Moving on to MOM 2.1. It's very, very exciting. We've had a series of meetings, three in person, and two via Zoom with downtown building owners and business owners, and it's kind of expanded beyond that. There is one more Zoom meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening, Wednesday night at 6:30, and if you're interested in getting that link, please give me a holler, email, whatnot. The response from the proposed plan created by a group of folks, including the Chamber and some folks in the entertainment industry, both locally and those that have second homes, has been, quite frankly, overwhelming. We've had to take some of our initial thoughts, not knowing quite how it would be received by the community, and have revised them bigger and better and more exciting than I could have ever imagined. Again, switching topics, Safe Routes to School and that project taking place down on Fremont Road, the first of three advertisements to appear in the newspaper this past week. Again, that'll continue for another couple of weeks with bid opening shortly thereafter. Shortly after, right after last city council meeting, two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go over to the fire station, as the men and women over there trained on something called an auto pulse. The manufacturer is ZOLL, Z-O-L-L, ZOLL Auto Pulse. If you get an opportunity to YouTube, basically, it's a mechanical CPR device. So, within just a few seconds of EMTs arriving on scene, they can strap this device around an individual, hit a few buttons, and it starts the chest compressions that normally would be done by manual CPR. The survivability rate is much higher with the auto pulse, and the demonstration talked about all the scientific reasons why. The fire department had an opportunity to use that. It did what it was supposed to do. It got the patient from their emergency site to the hospital, and I won't go into any other details, what happened after that, because that may be a HIPAA thing. But nonetheless, the auto pulses is working, doing what it should. It's a really neat mechanism. Give Chief Johnson a call. I'm sure that the folks at the squad will be happy to show you how it works. It's a slick, slick piece of equipment. I'd like to extend a thank you to Deana Shanker, our law director, for taking the initiative on ordinance 5-21 and 6-21. You know, you've all heard me talk about the top five list, with number two on that being city finances. These two ordinances are duties that, one of them is a duty that the city performs on a regular basis and is never charged for that service. After doing some research, she's developed a plan to take care of that. The other, 621, deals with assisting the community in general in background checks, and the ability that the police department has, and both of these then establish fees for those services. I don't know if she plans on talking about it. I'm going to throw her under the bus at the moment, and say if she would like to, she can certainly do that during her presentation here in a few minutes. Continuing with COVID vaccines, they're moving forward. There's actually more clinics this week than ever before, and the folks at the Ottawa County Health Department and EMA are still in need of volunteers. I'm going to give the name and number out again. Kim Sedlak is the contact, 419-898-6459, 898-6459, to volunteer. Again, there is a 99% chance that if you do volunteer, you will get your vaccine the day of volunteering. Can't say it's a 100% chance. They told me not to say that, but at the same time, I am not aware of anyone that has volunteered that wanted the shot, that has said, no, we can't do it today. So, take that for what it's worth. Mark your calendars for Monday, March 8th, Monday, March 8th at 6:00 PM. The Greater Port Clinton Area Arts Council is having a Zoom, a public Zoom meeting to talk about their plans for the art garage. It's very, very exciting. If you would like a link to that Zoom meeting, then That goes to Carol Morgan, and she'll send you the link to the Zoom. Another thing to mark on your calendar, and this is the final thing on my report this evening. I'm sorry, I was waiting for the applause. April 16th and 17th, Cabela's Master Walleye Circuit is slated to come back into Port Clinton. If you remember, a couple of years ago, they had a big circus tent and did a television broadcast across the street, across the street from me, at Waterworks Park. They're going to use... They're expecting competitors who will come in a few days early. That's a neat thing to have. And though, though, very much coming through while I, here in the Walleye, table. Right in center. Questions? Report?
Thank you.
Oh, what? Yes? Sorry.
What?
Wow. Okay. I have one question. Snow removal. Tracy, do we still have the program for the elderly that we clean out the end of the driveways?
Just call Sandy, and she'll add it to the list. She has given an updated list to Lucas, so he has the updated list.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Madam President.
Madam President, I have something for the mayor, but I'm afraid to bring it up.
What?
My goodness.
Hey, please just text them.
Mayor Snyder, could you give just a little update about some of the stuff that was talked about in the Main Street meeting, like the Maura and the Walleye Festival, and just a tiny bit, so counsel knows sort of what's happening in that arena?
And I won't say names, but the majority of city council has seen the presentation. I don't even know where to begin with this whole scenario. Basically, the idea of MOM this year arose from amongst six or seven people. Tracy, Nicole Coe, Brandon Booker. Brandon Booker is probably a name you don't recognize, and it's, as I get more and more involved in this mayor thing, it's amazing, I just, oh, there I am, I just moved, it's amazing how many people and the resources that we have coming through Port Clinton. Brandon spent quite a bit of time at MOM last year because he has a second home a couple blocks from MOM. Brandon is also, I don't want to say an executive, but a high-ranking official in an organization called Live Nation. Live Nation is the United States, or perhaps even the world's Blossom Music Center, River Bend Down in Cincinnati, Pittsburgh, all over the United States. One of the key components of of MOM, and putting coming across Perry Street, an idea of what's happening down there. Ron Nish has agreed to be our entertainment coordinator, coordinating entertainment, and it has grown, as we've discussed, this plan through the meetings, from three nights a week to all the time, to the point where the Firelands Art Series is looking at having senior entertainment in the downtown area. The Idaho Republic Library is looking at having all their kids programming in the MOM area. We're talking with some folks about doing a karaoke night, a trivia night, and then the regular band performances and the Riverfront Live on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. Sunday afternoons will be a lighter type of music. We're asking for initial sponsors to have naming rights on the pavilion that's going on top, the canopy pillars, as we're calling it, the bike racks, and a bike rack isn't necessarily where you put your bike, but those security barriers, you can put sleeves over the top of those. So that's one source of revenue that'll go to fund a certain segment of what we're going to do down there. And our goal was $30,000. In the week and a half that we've been doing this, we're there, and there's still more money coming in. We're probably going to be in the 40,000 to 42,000 range for that, and that'll go back into funding amongst all the businesses in the downtown area. We've created this delicious apple pie, and this is part of the presentation, but we've created this delicious apple pie in the downtown, and everybody's eating off of that apple pie, and we've put everybody into three categories: food and beverage, retail and service, and lodging. And although everyone's eating off of that pie, they're all eating at a slightly different percentage, it's fair to assume that 100%, or very close to 100% of the people that go down to MOM are there for food and beverage. And then, the spin-off of that is what we saw last year with the retail side, and as you all know, I'm in the lodging industry, although I can honestly say, no one has called and said, hey, I want to book a condo or a hotel because of MOM, we all realize the benefit of having that right here. And in addition to having MOM there, we also realize the change in this entire region with things like Twin Oost and Gideon Owen, and the popularity of African Safari Wildlife Park, the lighthouse, the beach. All of these things have begun to transform this area, mainland area, from being a secondary destination to a primary destination for folks that come to this area. Five, six years ago, 99% of the people that stayed with us were going to the island. That's probably 65, 70% now, because they're looking to stay, or if you want to capitalize on that. So we took those three categories, gave them each a percentage of that pie, and have set up a formula to charge, for lack of a better term, charge the entities that choose to participate. It's very, very reasonable. For about the cost of, or the cost of two additional four-top tables in a restaurant, they can pay for entertainment at a level they could never afford or want to have inside their establishment, because it's going to take away table space. And the return on what we're looking to do at MOM, as far as the level of entertainment, wouldn't make sense for someone inside an establishment. And the response has been very, very good. That's even saying it lightly, from those that want to participate, and they see the value. Places like, well, the Regonies and Lillian Gertz that have been to the meetings, their portion of that could be as little as $29 per entertainment gig down there. And they readily admit, with MOM and without MOM, they're definitely selling more than $29 worth of merchandise, having MOM down there. So it makes sense to have this partnership. The Greater Port Clinton Area Arts Council is going to be heavily involved in this. Still having all the other activities down there, like the Art Walk. She alluded to the Walleye Festival. There are some issues, and I think I talked about these at the last meeting regarding the state and having festivals and events and so forth. The Walleye Festival is going forward in two paths. One is a Walleye Festival, just like we've had every year for the past 40, except last year, over at Waterworks Park. The reality is, we probably won't be able to do that. Walleye Festival is most, more likely going to be in downtown, and using the MOM component as their entertainment tent, with the vendors on Madison and Second. Again, no rides, at least we don't think so at this point, but they're moving forward there. The folks that plan the Rock the Light Festival, again, they're going on two paths, one across the street at Waterworks Park, and the other one in the downtown area. The Chamber of Commerce and Main Street, they have their annual banquet in March every year. They've obviously canceled that for obvious reasons, but they have reserved MOM, and I can't remember the night, but it's, I think it's a Wednesday in June, is going to be the Chamber of Commerce annual banquet in MOM. So there's a lot of interest in making MOM continue and making it even bigger and better. I actually, from one of the meetings, there was a gentleman, after hearing the presentation, has demonstrated a very strong interest in opening up a business in one of the vacant storefronts, and has talked to, I know he asked, because I was in the room when he did it, to building owners about their vacant space. So, it's all very, very exciting. I don't want to get too excited, but I am very excited about the prospects of continuing the development and revitalization of our downtown. Tracy, did I forget anything in that?
No, I would suggest anybody to get on the Zoom to see the whole presentation. It's outstanding. So, you've told them everything so far, so get on that Zoom tomorrow, and you'll see the rest of it.
Yeah.
Yes? Mr. Belo?
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor, just one idea that came to me this past week, because I heard that MOM 2.1, I think you're calling it, since it's grown and transitioned event or the organization, if you think about just like, you could call it daddy. Just think about that as being more descriptive than MOM, since it's grown and blossomed into a fully realizing
And one of the things that is going to happen, we're exploring the feasibility, but it will happen, are QR codes all over the place. One of the things that we noticed last year is people really didn't know what it was. So, if you're familiar with QR codes, you walk up with your phone, put your phone over the top of this QR code, and it says, open up this website? Okay. And we've got a rough draft of the language. What is MOM? Why was it created? Here are the business partners. What is Maura? Here's what it is. Here are the three simple rules. Don't screw it up for everybody else. Here's the map. So, building on that brand, whether it's MOM or daddy, or all the above, we know that we need to make that happen. Like, you know, last year, it survived, and again, part of the presentation, it survived on a wing and a prayer. We were, it was a Pee-wee baseball league. On Tuesday, we were planning for Thursday. This will hopefully, sorry, people keep jumping in and out, this will hopefully give it a little bit more organization and fixture. I've got to say, you know, I didn't realize, I don't know how to say this, I didn't realize how many visitors, not second homeowners, but visitors, pay attention to this area. Again, going back, taking off the mayor hat, putting on my day job hat, we just started our campaign launching reservations for this year, and the number of people that have said, you know, they kind of put two and two together, because they see the Facebook stuff and the news articles, that the guy they're talking to is also the mayor for Port Clinton. How many people are excited about the art garage and MOM and the beach? And it's really cool to, you know, we always hear in our circles, I wish Port Clinton could be more like, fill in the blank. It's turning around, and people are really excited about what's happening up here. And talk to the realtors on this call, and the friends you know that are realtors, and any impacts that it's having throughout the community. It's scary how exciting it is. It's very scary.
And, Mrs. Hickman?
Not blocking the sun, I'm raising my hand.
Yeah, Mrs. Hickman.
Are we going to get kiosks downtown?
We have one kiosk. We actually had it last year with something that the Chamber of Commerce had ordered, and when they opened it up, it was something that required supports into the ground. So, our folks are looking at ways of not digging holes in the fresh pavement and getting kiosks downtown, but that is certainly part of that whole conversation, to share the information on MOM and Maura and those businesses that are participating. So, yes.
Is that the kiosk that Main Street?
The one that's sitting outside in Nicole's office. Yep.
Yeah, I know, a couple of years ago, they started fundraising for one, so I didn't know if it ever became to fruition or what happened.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay. Counsel, I misspoke. The resolution 21-1 can go to the third reading. It is ordinance 3-21 that would need to be passed on its second reading. Sorry about that. Auditor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. As Madam President alluded to, there are two ordinances for their first reading today. The first one is 4-21, I believe, which is the full appropriations ordinance. As you recall, at the beginning of this year, you are, at the end of last year, actually, you adopted an ordinance that allowed us to operate financially on a temporary basis that expires as of March 31st, 2021. Ordinance 4-21 is the full-blown appropriations that will allow us to operate through the remainder of the fiscal year. Also before you is ordinance, I believe it's 7-21. That is the bond ordinance for the securing of financing needed for completion of the waterfront walkway project. So, the bond that we're looking at issuing, we talked about this in the past, so it shouldn't be a big surprise, but $670,000, that will finance the city's share for the grant purposes, cover construction management piece as well, and make sure that we have enough financing to secure that project. I typically don't do this, but I would ask that counsel, please adopt, if so willing, adopt that ordinance on its first reading. The only reason being that it is time-sensitive, and we have a current rate proposal, but that rate proposal expires as of March 3rd. So, in order for us to secure the rate, given the proposal, it's imperative that you pass that tonight, if you so choose. And that is it, Madam President. I'll take any questions.
I have a question for the finance director here. 421, did you want that passed this evening? Is that what you said?
No, that 421 721 be passed tonight, if possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hatfield?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hatfield, we had a conversation on this, and I found it interesting. Could you mind explaining a little bit about the process, how you had to first contact our bond coordinator, for lack of a better term, and then reach out to the lender? So, no matter what lender would have come to us, we would have still had to have asked for it on the first reading.
Correct. So, we, the legislation is actually drafted by our bond counsel. Michael Sharb is the one in charge of our bond counsel. He will handle all of the necessary legal documentation that's needed for securing of the issue. What had happened was, is Mr. Sharb, once I had reached out to him and had an opportunity to talk about what we were looking at doing, he provided contact information for about five or six individuals, lenders, that would be interested in what they call a direct purchase of the bond. So, as opposed to going to our open market, and there's a whole lot more involved in that process, I reached out and solicited proposals from five or six different lending institutions. I will tell you that three, I believe, three of the lending institutions told us that our bond issuance was too small, they only sought to fund bond issuances that were over $1 million. So, those were out, and then we did receive three proposals, one from Huntington, one from Vectra, and there's another one that slips my mind, but there are three proposals on the table. Irregardless of which route we choose, obviously, we will go with the lowest route, which I believe is Huntington Bank at, I believe, one point nine percent. Those are all time sensitive and they all have similar expiration dates. They're only good for a certain number of days, just based on the market and that interest rate. Changes.
Any questions?
Madam President, I'll just toss this out now because. The ordinance is coming up. We discussed that this would be coming. We talked about the financial aspect. At the last Finance Committee meeting last week and everybody was in approval. Everybody was supportive of moving forward the bond to finance this.
Thank you. Law Directors report.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so there were two new ordinances that I brought. On behalf of the Police Department, I spoke with Mark Anderson and he. Suggested the ordinance for the the writ. And the orders ordinance. So basically what happens is when the Ottawa County Municipal Court. When they send out subpoenas or they do warrants. The Port Clinton Police Department delivers those within the city of Port Clinton and they have not been charging a fee. So the Ottawa County Sheriff's Office, every time they go and deliver a subpoena or writ, they charge a fee plus mileage. And that gets sent to the municipal court and then once a defendant has their. A court case concluded, it gets placed onto fines and court costs. And then that gets paid. So. Mark Anderson suggested that the city do something similar because the warrants and the writs are already being served. It's just a matter of getting paid for it. We spoke with Judge Wargo and he was in support of the. This concept and this process taking place. Sorry, I created the ordinance in order to do that. So. Um, once this ordinance takes effect, when Port Clinton Police Officers. Serve a warrant, they're going to get paid twenty dollars for each warrant they serve. And then they get paid ten dollars for each subpoena they serve and then once. Um, the person pays their fines and court costs, that will, money will come back to the city. So that will be some extra revenue for the city. The second ordinance, I spoke once again with Mark Anderson and he indicated that the city. Is in the process of getting some software. To do civil criminal background checks. And right now, the only department that's doing that is the Sheriff's Office. So I I'm not sure if we have the ordinance or if we have the machine, I'm sorry, if we have the software yet, but. We are in the process of getting it. So what this would do is if a person, you know, in Ottawa County. Needs a background check, you know, for licensing, employment or volunteer activities. They could now come to the Police Department and get that background check taken care of. A BCI check is thirty dollars, the FBI check is forty dollars, and if you need both, it's going to be seventy dollars. This will also help the Sheriff's Office because currently they're about a month behind in scheduling. These background checks. They only have one person there doing it, so this should definitely take some of the burden off of them. The program is through Web Check Services and it's just, it's software that gets placed. Onto the fingerprint machine that the department already has. And this will enable them to do these background checks, which once again will generate revenue for the city. In addition to providing these services. The fees that are listed on here are identical to the fees at the Sheriff's Office, so we're not trying to undercut the Sheriff's Office or anything. It's just an additional service that'll be provided. Mark Anderson will be doing those Monday through Friday, I believe, seven to three. Or by appointment, if it's outside of those times and he can, he can accommodate that. So that's, that's where we're at with both of those ordinance. If anybody has any questions.
Yeah, Ms. Shanker. You said the funds will be going back to the city. Are they going to go back to PD or to the general fund or where are they going?
Well, at this time, there's two different funds that are going to be set up, one for each. And then I'm going to, I'm not sure exactly if that's going to go back to the general fund or. I don't know if Mr. Hatfield can answer that or. Mr. Colston, but as of right now, we're just trying to establish the program. But I have designated that the fees go in their own separate fund. So we can track how much we're bringing in and track, you know, how well these programs are doing. Where the money is actually going to go. I think that's above my. Yeah, my freight rates, I'm not sure.
Mr. Trolley, I would assume that the funds would actually be funneled back into the general fund. As you know, the the police and the general fund are kind of one in the same at this point, so obviously. You know, the, it could be used for police use in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hatfield.
Any further questions? Is that all you have, Ms. Shanker?
That's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Superraisers reports, Mr. Colston.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to thank the Street Crews. I thought they did a bang up job. We had black pavement the next day, so. Very happy with that. They've been working on cleaning catch basins off. Because it was starting to melt, obviously, we don't want it to flood. And you did correct that. I was going to tell you that, that ordinance three dash twenty one is the one we would like to pass tonight. I would like to meet with the FOP Union Reps later this week and get that signed and get that all set up. And that's all I have tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Colston? I see Chief Hickman is on, but no picture. Do you have anything, Chief Hickman?
He doesn't have a mic. He's muted. But he has nothing.
He has nothing, okay, thank you.
Hear him, okay?
So thank you. Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Mr. Beal Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met last week and moved to recommend approval of ordinance three tonight. And then the resolution pertaining to the. Fire levy resolution twenty one one, we recommended adoption upon its three readings. We already discussed the bond issuance for the waterfront walkway pod project, a very important project we hope to see. Finally realized down there and so we'll, I'll be making a motion. When we get to that part of the agenda to tonight with council. That's Finance Committee and Economic and Community Development Committee. Mayor and Safety Service Director, I met earlier today to talk about some of the. Rules and regulations around downtown off-street parking requirements. You recall that those were paused for investigation and. Rewrite, which we have ideas about how to rewrite them and hopefully we'll see those in ordinance form coming up. Some regulations about allowing food trucks in limited areas within the city. And then, which other thing? Oh, sidewalk dining and sidewalk retail by brick and mortar stores within downtown, so. We expect to be taking those up at committee level and making a recommendation back to council shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Beal? Ms. Phillips, Safety Services.
Thank you, but we have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Environment and Public Works, Mrs. Hickman.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Arts and Culture, Mrs. Gilman.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. As I've stated before. You know, I mean, normally you meet monthly for your committees, but with the pandemic at this point. If you only meet when you have something on your agenda that is agreeable. It just has to be done by Zoom, so just make sure you check with Ms. Ostermer to make sure she's available. At the time and the date that you pick and then she will do the advertising and such. We have no correspondence this evening. We, and we'll move on to readings of ordinances and resolutions. We have no third readings. Second reading of ordinance and resolutions, we have ordinance three dash twenty one. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only ordinance three dash twenty one? You're muted, Sandy, sorry. Start over. Thank you.
Can't read my lips, I guess. Ordinance three dash twenty one and ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service. To enter into a collective bargaining agreement with Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number seventy nine and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Council wish to take any action as to ordinance three dash twenty one?
Madam President.
Beal.
Move to waive the three required readings and ordinance three twenty one.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Beal, seconded by Ms. Phillips to waive the three required readings. As to ordinance three dash twenty one, would the clerk please call the roll?
Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman.
You almost called me Roxanne. Yes.
Thank you, dear. That is my name.
What's in your cup?
Beth, no doubt. Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Pat Hovis.
Yes.
And Gabe Beal.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. And then the three required readings. Yeah, are waived. Yes, Mr. Beal.
Move to retain the emergency clause of ordinance three twenty.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. I have a motion by Mr. Beal and seconded by Ms. Phillips to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance three dash twenty one. Any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Gabe Beal.
Yes.
Pat Hovis.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman.
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
And Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero and the emergency clause is retained as to ordinance three dash twenty one. Does Council wish to take any further action as to ordinance three dash twenty one?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Beal.
I move to adopt ordinance three twenty one.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Phillips. I have a motion by Mr. Beal, seconded by. Ms. Phillips to adopt ordinance three dash twenty one. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman.
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Pat Hovis.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Gabe Beal.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero, ordinance three dash twenty one is hereby adopted. The clerk please read by title and summary only, resolution twenty one dash one for its second reading.
Resolution number twenty one dash one, a resolution declaring it necessary to renew an existing one point nine mill tax levy. And requesting the Ottawa County Auditor to certify the total current tax valuation of the city. And the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by that renewal levy pursuant to section five seven zero five point one nine. Of the revised code and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Council wish to take any action as to resolution twenty one dash one? Seeing none, or a resolution twenty one dash one will be moved to its third reading, March ninth. Twenty twenty one at the regular scheduled meeting. First readings of ordinances and resolution. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only ordinance four dash twenty one?
Ordinance four dash twenty one and ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Port Clinton. County of Ottawa, State of Ohio during fiscal year ending on December thirty first, twenty twenty one.
Thank you. Does Council wish to take any action as to ordinance four dash twenty one? Seeing none, ordinance four dash twenty one will be moved to its second reading. On March ninth, twenty twenty one at the regular scheduled council meeting. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only ordinance five dash twenty one?
Ordinance number five dash twenty one and ordinance establishing a fee schedule for the service and return of writs. And orders by the Port Clinton Police Department in the Ottawa County Municipal Court.
Thank you. Does Council wish to take any action as to ordinance five dash twenty one? Seeing none, ordinance five dash twenty one will move to its second reading on March ninth, twenty twenty one. At the regular scheduled council meeting. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only ordinance six dash twenty one?
Ordinance stat, excuse me, ordinance number six dash twenty one and ordinance establishing a fee schedule for criminal background checks provided to individuals. At the Port Clinton Police Department.
Thank you. Does Council wish to take any action as to ordinance six dash twenty one this evening? Seeing none, ordinance six dash twenty one will be moved to its second reading. The March nine, twenty twenty one regular scheduled council meeting. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only ordinance seven dash twenty one?
Ordinance number seven dash twenty one and ordinance providing for the insurance, issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum. Maximum principal amount of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the purpose of paying a portion of the costs. In cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation. Of improving the city's recreational facilities by constructing sidewalks, pathways and multi-purpose trails. Connecting the city's downtown to the area where the Portage River meets Lake Erie, including installing lights and signage. And constructing improvements to the stabilizing the embankment along the Portage River in that area and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Council wish to take any action this evening as to ordinance seven dash twenty one?
Madam President.
Beal.
Move to waive the three required readings of ordinance seven twenty one.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. Any discussion? We have a motion by Mr. Beal to waive the three required readings. As to ordinance seven dash twenty one is seconded by Mr. Trolley. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Pat Hovis.
Yes.
Gabe Beal.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman.
Yes.
Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Do, motion carries seven zero as to waiving the three required readings as to ordinance seven dash twenty one. Does Council wish to take any further action this evening as to ordinance seven dash twenty one?
Madam President.
Mr. Beal.
Move to retain the emergency clause on ordinance seven twenty.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. I have a motion by Mr. Beal, seconded by Mr. Trolley to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance seven dash twenty one. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Roseanne Hickman.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Pat Hovis.
Yes.
Gabe Beal.
Yes.
Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. The emergency clause as to ordinance seven dash twenty one is hereby retained. Does Council wish to take any further action as to ordinance seven dash twenty one?
Madam President.
Mr. Beal.
Move to adopt ordinance seven twenty one.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. I have a motion by Mr. Beal, seconded by Mr. Trolley to adopt ordinance seven dash twenty one. Any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Sabodian.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Gabe Beal.
Yes.
Pat Hovis.
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman.
Yes.
Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Seven zero, uh, ordinance seven dash one is hereby adopted. Proceed to business from the floor, Mr. Trolley.
Sorry, I have nothing tonight, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, we mentioned earlier with how what a good job that the city workers were doing, getting rid of the snow off the street. And going back that second time to get around. I noticed today too that they were cleaning over the catch basins and taking off the ice and the snow. And I think that's important and that people by their own homes would help to clean up that stuff by coming out there with a shovel or a broom or something. We wouldn't have as much of a flooding as I saw when I was out today roaming around. But I think the city workers just, they really put a lot into it and they'd seem to, they smile a lot, but you don't really see from people out working in the cold. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And be sure also that if, when you are out there and if you happen to have a fire hydrant in your yard, get out a broom or a shovel or something and clear a path to a piece of cement like your driveway or whatever, so those things can be taken care of. Or the EMS too, where they get, need to get around there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Uh, Mrs. Gilman.
Thank you, Madam President. Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Hickman?
Nothing tonight, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sabodian?
Nothing tonight, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hobus?
Nothing tonight, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beal?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of comments about the waterfront walkway project. We all know that, that parking lot in Waterworth Park is a good amount of it was crumbling into the river last year, especially with high water. So there's a lot of past, uh, external funding that has gone towards it that if we didn't go forward with the bond issuance, a lot of it would have been lost, right, Mr. Colston? So it makes, it makes a lot of sense not to let that go and to move forward with it and make the necessary, um, financial adjustments in the future, but I think it's a really smart move not to let that go. And I think it only teases up for future, uh, infrastructure and environmental related improvements in the future that we want forward with that. So glad to see that that'll happen. And Mr. Hatfield, thanks for chasing that down uh, for the bond. On, uh, mom, I still think daddy's a great name for it. Keep that in mind. And we'll talk about the, uh, full year budget for twenty-twenty-one at the next Finance Committee meeting. Uh, that hasn't been scheduled yet, but I have no doubt that we'll get that approved before the deadline at the end of March. And that's all, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move this August body adjourned.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I'll call you Tracy.
Yeah, just call.
All right, buddy. Good night.
Good night. Good night. Thank you, everyone.